All right, yeah, we're on.
Walk in front of it, alright, okay. All right, we're going to get started. We still do have one candidate that has not arrived, but we really do want to get started on time because we figure it's important for you who are here on time that you get to have all the two and a half hours of what's going on. First of all, I have to shamefacedly say, and believe me, this was not intentional by any matter of means, but I was working on putting together the program at about 2:00 in the morning, and I oversaw three candidates. I did not put their names on here. And so if you want to flagellate someone, do it to me. It wasn't on purpose, believe me. And it'll teach me not to do this kind of thing at 2:00 in the morning anymore. But Ravi Bala's name is not on here, so I ask you, please, if you do have a pencil that I hope you picked up at the door to write on the index cards that are at the door also, put in Ravi Bala's name, James Doyle, and David Mello. And believe me, nothing in my heart brought me to this or my intention or anything else. So as I say, if you want to take it out on somebody, take it out on me. But anyway, I want to welcome all of you here this evening. We are faced this year with an incredible number of items that are going to be on the ballot. And so therefore, it really is important that you understand right up front what everyone, all the can... Ah, here comes David Mello right now. Very good, thank you. It's okay, I know. I know how tough it is getting around traffic these days. And so I do want to let you know that one of the things that the Quality of Life Coalition has always tried to do is to keep the people of the city informed about what is going on, not only with elections but with other things that happen within the city. This is our sixth year in doing this type of an event, and we have had many, many people talking with us afterwards about saying how important it is for them and how important it is for their neighbors to have this opportunity. Now, we also videotape, and we are in the process also of streaming this event right now on the Hoboken Quality of Life Coalition website. It's happening as we are going along right now. But afterwards, after probably day after tomorrow, we will have the DVD, the video DVD. We're giving it to the city, and it is going to be run on Channel 78. So if you are talking to someone and they say, gee, I couldn't make it, it was too bad, tell them to go to Channel 78 and also to our website, which is www.qlchoboken.org. I'm going to let Bob Bowden here, who has been our moderator for much of the last six years and has done such an incredibly good job for us, I'm going to let him go into a lot of the rules and regulations. But I am going to just have to say to all of the members of the candidates who are lined up here with us this evening that they are going to have to share the mics. So please don't attempt to talk without the microphone because you're not going to be recorded otherwise. And we do want to have your voice heard on the video when it is played on Channel 78 and on our website. And with that, let me just tell you a little bit about Bob.
That's all right.
No, I want to talk about you. I got to brag about you a little bit here. Bob started out, well, maybe didn't start out, but he began many, many years ago, actually, though he doesn't look that old, as an anchor and reporter for Bloomberg Television.
That's fine.
Conducting on-camera interviews with people as varied as Donald Trump, Martha Stewart, John McEnroe, and City Group Chairman Sandy Weil. He also appeared regularly on Onion News Network and on-camera reporter of satirical comedic news stories. He also, back in, when was it, 2008, 2007? You put together The Cartel about in that area. He directed and independently produced a documentary film that was shown right here in Hoboken at the time called The Cartel. The film ultimately won a number of festival awards, a national theatrical release and distribution by Warner Brothers, which is why it was able to be played here in Hoboken, as well as really rave reviews from Los Angeles Times, Chicago Tribune, New York Post, Barron's, Forbes.
I sent you a shorter version of this.
Fox News.
Three sentences, the one I sent today.
Well, I wasn't home to get it today, so. He now runs something called Choice Media, which is a national education reform news service, which is based here in Hoboken. And without saying too much more about him, thank you to all of you for being here this evening, and I'm turning this over to Bob, much to his relief.
Thanks, Helen. Thanks to all the candidates and everyone here for being interested in your town, enough to attend. This is the first of, I think, 42 nights of debates we're having here in Hoboken. I'm kidding, I think there are five nights, right, Helen? Four. It'll feel like five. There are four nights of debates we're having here in the next two weeks, but seriously, it's an important, they're important events, so thank you for your interest and your attendance. I guess you said I'm going to do the rules, which I don't like because they're boring, the rules. But here are the rules. It is one minute for an opening statement with each candidate. Then after we read a question, you'll get one and a half minutes to respond. And then if you want to request a rebuttal, you'll have a 60-second rebuttal opportunity. So that's it. So one-minute opening statement, 90 seconds to respond to one of the questions on the cards, and then a 60-second rebuttal, only if you'd like. I would just say that the night will go very slowly if every candidate does every rebuttal, so. You know, the Gettysburg Address was very short. Lincoln made a lot of headway with brevity. So that said, we are going to begin with opening statements, I suppose. Anything else I need to cover? Okay. So most of what I do through the night is trying to, is thinking about randomizing the order in which everyone speaks. So we will do that again. And I try to give everyone as many opportunities to be in the first and in the middle and at the end, et cetera. So with opening statements, there'll be 60 seconds, as I said, and we'll begin tonight with Patricia Waiters.
Thank you, Patricia Waiters. First of all, I want to thank Ms. Helen and OLG and Quality of Life for making this possible because this is what I depend on. Running as an independent, I don't have the funds and stuff to utilize my words and get out what I want to express. With that being said, I am the infamous Patricia Waiters from Channel 77 and 78. For those of you that don't know me, I'm well-known in this city. I'm the community activist and advocate. I've been doing this for six years. I'm so happy tonight because I'm so enthusiastic that I didn't have to take notes or write anything down. I have the facts. And I hope after I finish tonight, it will help determine who should be our next councillor, large candidate, and our next mayor. Thank you.
Oh, we generally allow applause on opening and closing statements, nowhere else in the night, but so that's fine. Number two, Ravi Bala.
Good evening. My name is Ravi Bala, and I'm proud to be a candidate for reelection to the Hoboken City Council. I would like to thank Quality of Life Coalition, everyone for being here, especially my lovely wife Navneet in the background, that thank you very much for being here. A little bit about myself. I was born and raised in New Jersey. I'm a proud product of the New Jersey public school system. I came to Hoboken actually as a young adult 14 years ago. And today, I'm married with two kids and a daughter as a first grader in the Wallace Public School. I'm happy to call Hoboken my home and to have the opportunity to establish roots in the community. I'm running for reelection because I care about Hoboken. I'm invested in its community and in its future. As you'll see through this debate, both myself as well as my candidates, excuse me, my running mates and Mayor Zimmer have a proven track record of success in leading Hoboken in the right direction in the years to come. We are running to continue that progress in the future. Thank you very much.
Okay. By the way, we should point out Francis is our timekeeper. There goes the sign. Francis will be holding up a yellow folder, right? When they have how much time left? They have 10 seconds left, then the red folder goes up, right? And then after some other period of time, then you hear the gong sound. So that's how it'll work. Next, Eduardo Gonzalez.
Hello. I'd like to thank the Quality of Life Coalition and the Elks for... Oh, yes, thank you. I'd like to thank the Quality of Life Coalition and the Elks for hosting this debate and the audience for attending and anyone viewing for being engaged. My name is Eduardo Gonzalez, and as your councilman, I will bring a diverse set of experiences to the city council. I am the son of Cuban immigrants that were seeking a better future in the United States. I was born in New Jersey, went to public school, and met my beautiful wife at Carnegie Mellon University. And we now have two wonderful children. Hoboken is at a crossroads. We need to view all of our problems holistically and not in a vacuum. As your councilman, you will see that I am results-oriented and approach solutions with a common sense approach that's currently lacking on the city council. All of our problems are intertwined, and we have to have multifaceted solutions. So on Tuesday, November 5th, I ask for your vote so we can see Hoboken reach its true potential.
Next opening statement from Frank Rayer.
I'd first like to start off thanking the Coalition for hosting this debate tonight. Most important, I'd like to say thank you to the public for coming out tonight. You're going to find out by the end of the night who is going to be the person that you're probably going to vote for, even though I see a lot of different faces with different groups here. I'm going to start off like this. Tell you a little bit about me. I'm born and raised, I'm here 62 years. I've seen all the differences and all the different people in this town, from $40 a month rent to where we are today. And I've been part of serving on different boards for a long time. I'm married to my wife Karen, who's here. I have two beautiful kids. One is in Rutgers, the other one is in New Jersey Technology Newark. I serve on the North Hudson Seuss Authority Board as chairman presently. I'm also, and that's for 22 years, and 30 years I've been on HOPE's and I'm the present chairman there.
Okay, time.
Thank you.
Next, Joe Mendak.
Good evening. Thank you Quality of Life Coalition and the Elks Club for hosting this tonight. My name is Joe Mendak. I moved to Hoboken in 1995 after I went to University of Dayton. So I've been here about 20 years. I started a business after that called Tisha Creative, which is a creative agency. Been growing for the last 20 years or so. We do work for Pfizer, Daily News, a lot of big clients. And we also started four years ago H-Mag, which is a local magazine that basically celebrates everything great about Hoboken. I met my beautiful wife at the old turtle club, it was the Gold Talk, and Jim Walsh right next to her introduced us. And I have two kids in town and a vested interest in town. I own two businesses in town. I have two kids here, both go to Wallace School. Here's a stack of all the different letters I've received over the last few years of all the different organizations that we've helped out since we started doing H-Mag and all the different places that we've done, American Legion, Quality of Life, all different places we've helped out. And I want to continue helping out in Hoboken. That's why I'm running for council. Thank you.
Next, Laura Miani.
Hello. Thank you to the Elks and QLC for hosting this conversation tonight. My name is Laura Miani. I'm the mother of two and a 20-year resident of Hoboken. I actually met my husband in high school. Also went to SUNY Albany, so I'm the product of public school education as well. I've had a 25-year career on Wall Street, the bulk of it doing institutional sales and trading. I am currently a trustee of the Stevens School, where my daughter is in the fourth grade. My son graduated last year and is now attending high school in Manhattan. I am running because I feel that Hoboken is not thriving the way I feel it should be, and I would like to help get Hoboken moving forward again. My running mates and I would like to work together with our fellow councilmates to improve the quality of life in Hoboken. One major concern for me is open space. I want to really make that a priority for our town's population. The ninth graders of today have been without a field since 2009, and the fourth graders have only vague memories of it ever being playable. So we do want to get the town moving forward again. Thank you very much.
Next, David Mello.
I want to thank you, QLC and everybody for doing the hard work to put on this event, but more importantly, I want to thank the friends and neighbors who are here tonight to see this debate in person. I moved to Hoboken 16 years ago when it was a thriving and exciting place, but after moving here, I realized that as much success as it had sometimes was in spite of itself and in spite of its government, a government that was sometimes corrupt and often not making the right quality of life decisions for its residents. That's a big part of why I ran for office four years ago with my friends Mayor Don Zimmer, Councilman Ravi Bala, and Carol Marsh. We made tremendous amount of improvements to the quality of life of our residents, starting with tremendous tax cuts year after year. Then we have created transportation options. I, as the chair of the Parking and Transportation Committee, was a leader in that. And we have created park space throughout our city, bringing PRC online, a safe PRC that wasn't burning our children like Brooklyn was, 1600 Park, and then I'm very proud that we acquired land in the Southwest. We brought the type of development that the city needs and will continue to do so going forward. Thank you.
Peter Biancomano.
I as well want to thank the Quality of Life Coalition and Mr. Bowden for moderating this debate. As I said in our last debate, from one media professional to another, thank you so much. I am running for city council to restore people's trust in Hoboken government, that the promises we make tonight are not promises to be broken but are promises to be kept. Being a lifelong resident and the first in my family to graduate from college, I want to give back to the community that has given me so much and has given my family so much back. It concerns me that only certain members of our community are being heard and the rest are being ignored. I look forward to discussing the issues that won't only benefit new and old Hoboken but one Hoboken. Thank you so much.
Brittany Montgomery Cook.
Hello, Hoboken residents, Bob, and Quality of Life Coalition. You may have seen me running around Hoboken with my English Bulldog Griffin or ran the Shambord Place with CrossFit. But now I've decided to run in Hoboken for a different reason, for city council. I am Brittany Montgomery Cook, and I am running for council-at-large on the one Hoboken team with mayoral candidate Tim Acapiti, Frank Rayer, and Peter Biancomano. I'm running for council because I want to help bring our city together. My great-grandparents came to the United States, got married at OLG, and began their family here. My family's legacy in the city and my desire to make a difference have driven me to get involved in changing Hoboken. I've been a special education teacher in New York City for the last 13 years and earned my master's degree from NYU. I've seen firsthand the importance of solid education programs, collaboration between organizations, and the power of compromise in my classroom, school, and Department of Education. I'm new to Hoboken politics, but that doesn't mean I cannot work in the best interests of all my neighbors. I want to learn more about the needs of all residents, collaborate on creative solutions, and make well-thought-out decisions that will help the new place I call home.
And finally, James Doyle.
Thank you, Helen and Bob. I'm Jim Doyle. I'm a 26-year resident of Hoboken. I've lived here, I'm an environmental lawyer. I work for the US EPA. I'm an Elk. Some of you may know me from the Hoboken Harriers. I've been running that club, no pun intended, for the last 15 years or so with, and their charitable events. I became involved in town in the 90s. I'm mostly as a, whether it's a reformer or an activist or rabble-rouser, but it was advocating for open space and for reasonable development. And I've been doing that for many, many years. My wife co-founded hobokenparks.org, which was relevant to the 1600 Park acquisition. And I'm running because I want to keep the city moving forward. Thank you.
So that concludes our opening statements. So we've asked the crowd not to applaud it now until we get to the end of the night. And we will begin reading the questions. Again, 90-second answers for the questions. The first one by sheer number, volume of questions, I'll just kind of count them off here. I'll show you the cards. What are your feelings about rent control? Please state your position on rent control issue. How will you vote on Hoboken public question number one, the rent control question? What's your position on rent control? Rent control, rent control. So let's begin. Laura Miani on rent control.
Yes, thank you. That's actually a great question. As was discussed in some of the other debates, it's kind of true that the question was being brought up in this manner, but it could have been settled down earlier. Having said that, I do think that landlords of these smaller properties should be entitled to make a reasonable return on their investment. Now, again, this is for properties that are vacated voluntarily. No one's going to be pushed out of their home or anything of that nature. I do think that the tenants need to be protected in that regard. But again, this is for the smaller owners who might just be looking to rent out their space for a little while and something else. So I do think that we need to come together and have something that works for both tenants and landlords. But again, I do think that landlords should be able to make a reasonable return on investment.
David Mello.
Rent control is one of the tougher issues our city faces, and we've gone a long way to making improvements already toward it with some changes, significant changes to the ordinance over the years that we have served, our team has served on the city council. The problem that still remains is that your mom-and-pop landlord is the one that is most burdened by this law, whereas your large corporate landlord is not. That is what we need to work forward in further revisions and future revisions to equalize out and change. I don't want to pass a law that just when large corporate landlords are about to run at the end of their exemptions from having affordable housing in the city, that it's suddenly going to be done away with, that there's not going to be any rent control at all. What I want to do instead is preserve rent control and make it such that the small mom-and-pop landlord that's renting to somebody that makes two, three times as much income from them than they do is not going to be burdened by rent control, but that the large corporate building or developer that has a large building will be held to it. The way we're working now is there's a law on the books that is going to potentially do away with rent control entirely. And just when those corporate buildings were about to be a source of affordable housing for many of our residents, they won't be so.
Next, Brittany Montgomery Cook.
I believe a property owner has the right to a fair and equitable return on their investment, and there should be zero tolerance for landlords kicking out their tenants. It's a difficult situation, but this seems to be the best win-win to both protect the homeowner and the renter.
Next, Peter Biancomano.
Thank you so much for this question, whoever submitted it, the many people who submitted it. As a city councilman, there's really nothing for an elected official to do in this issue since it is on the ballot. I believe that putting it on the ballot was the right way to do it. Let the people decide about rent control. But with that said, as a citizen, I would let you know how I would vote. With the reevaluation coming, landlords might start paying double in taxes, forcing them to sell their properties. And that's a problem for your small mom-and-pop owners, in my opinion. So as Brittany says, I'm supporting this. I will be voting yes on it because it does give a fair and equitable return for the landlords. But let me make myself very, very clear. And as Brittany said, we will not tolerate any landlord-abused tenants. Our team, our administration, will have a tenant advocate attorney to protect tenants' rights for free for everyone. Thank you.
Jim Doyle.
Well, I'm not in support of the petition question. And contrary to what the prior speaker said, the city council in fact does have a great deal of authority in changing the rent control ordinance. And I'm in favor not of this question, which was written by one side of the two sides and put forth before the voters as a yes or no answer. I'm in favor of actually working across with both tenants and landlords and finding cures as we did with my council, my running mate, Ravi Bala, did in drafting and my other running mate in supporting Ordinance Z88, which provided protections for some of the abuses that were occurring. And I think we can do that again, but we don't need to do it with the one side laying out the ordinance and giving it to us as a yes or no.
Eduardo Gonzalez.
The rent control issue is a complex issue, and I think what we currently have on the books is somewhat outdated and needs to be improved. For the rent control question to go on the ballot, to me, it seems to be a failure of our city council and it's a failed leadership. We should be consulting best-in-breed regulations from across the country, and we need to make sure that the ordinance is equitable for both renters and owners. I don't think that it's something that can be solved with a simple yes or no on the ballot. And I'll make sure that as your councilman, I work to solve that issue because that's why we're being elected, is to take the tough stance.
Joe Mendak.
Thank you, Bob. You know, the rent control is a tough question. I actually rent currently, and I also own a condo in town. I've owned a few condos. So it is, I'm on kind of both sides of the fence here, but I think really the landlord should have the right to charge what they want in market rate. And being landlord, I think it's important to do that. If you're going to invest your money, being a business owner, when I invest my money, I expect to get a certain return on it, and you should get the fair market value. I think it should have been handled on the council level, and this shouldn't have come to the referendum. It should have been handled with the leadership and done before coming to this, but personally, I would vote yes on the referendum.
Frank Rayer.
The first thing I think should happen is we should have a city council who wants to build affordable housing in the town. We start there. I built 115 units, the last 115 units in Hoboken. As far as to answering your rent control question, I don't believe that a person who bought a brownstone for $2 million should be on rent control. I think that's crazy, all right? Anybody who has one-family houses or condominiums should be exempt from rent control. I also want to bring up a case where my kindergarten teacher was born in a building down in the third ward and lived 99 years. At the end of 99 years, the rent was $243, and they told the landlord the most you could get is a 25% vacancy factor. I think for being a good landlord for 100 years, that person should be rewarded. So changes have to be made. Clear fact, I want one-family homeowners and condominiums exempt, and I want a council that's going to be listening to half of this town that there's such a need for affordable housing and to take care of seniors and people who need it. Thank you.
Patricia Waiters.
Being an advocate in this community, I attend a lot of hearings with rent control. I'm urging you to vote no. This is smack in the face for tenants, like you said, the 99-year-old lady who lived here all of their life, and their investment is also their apartment. here all of their life, and their investment is also their apartment. What's an apartment to us is our home. I'm tired of seeing you war-trucks departing Hoboken because the landlord harassed you to get out of the unit so they could raise the rent. It's like a scare tactic. No disrespect to no owner, but if a tenant lived there all of their life, and shame on the administration that left the policy sit there since 1978, all the past mayors in this administration now, and ignore the ordinance, instead of doing something about it, shame on you. Here we go again with a known disregard to the residents that live here. I urge you to vote no. We deserve the right to live here. We can't own, we can't afford condos. No one is even thinking about affordable housing. You're trying to get rid of Housing Authority. We work and we deserve to live in Hoboken. We built Hoboken. These newcomers worried about-
No, excuse me, no, no reaction.
The newcomers worried about money. Hoboken is not a cash cow. Thank you. Please vote no on November the 5th.
Robby Balla.
Before getting involved in politics, I had the privilege of serving as the Hoboken Rent Board Attorney for about two years, and got to know firsthand some of the challenges, and I put that diplomatically in the ordinance. As council members, we represent Hoboken. We don't represent landlords, and we don't represent tenants. So what our job, or our duty is as council members, is to craft legislation, in this case, the rent control ordinance, that both allows landlords to make a fair value on the return of their investment, but also protects tenants and preserves a critical form of affordable housing. As a council member, I'm proud to say that I helped advance just that in passing Z88, which addressed some of the inequities that were occurring against landlords, while also strengthening protections to tenants. But that also withstood a referendum challenge. With respect to this new referendum ordinance that's on the ballot, I would respectfully disagree with the ordinance and urge people to vote no. The reason why is because I think the penalty provisions are too weak, and they don't have any teeth in order to protect tenants. And secondly, we shouldn't be legislating rent control through referendums. We've got to do it at the city council days, the same way I did it when my council members passed it unanimously, nine, nothing, two years ago. Thank you.
All right, next question. Well, pardon, are there any rebuttals? Any 60-second rebuttals? Not that I'm going to be really heated, if that's okay, okay. We're okay, good. All right, next question. And again, this one has several incarnations on different index cards, and that was a while ago, there are probably many more. I'll read a few. "What is your position on development? How much more should we allow? Please describe your stance on development in Hoboken. How would you advocate for responsible development in north, south, or western parts of Hoboken? What is your position on development projects such as NJ Transit Vision 2020 Monarch?" So a development in Hoboken omnibus question. Frank Rayer, first.
I think it's about time we start building affordable housing. I said it before. It's a need in this town. I had 90 apartments built, I thought I was doing a great job. When I had 7,800 applications, I felt that I wasn't. Nobody's listening to the people and their needs as far as other development. Parking is a huge issue. We've been talking about parking for I don't know how many years, and every time I come up here, it's less and less parking in our town, which is the number one issue. Development's got to be sensible, not like they're building the skyscrap, but buildings on the north coast, or the north part of Hoboken right now. And as far as development, development-like shop right that I built, creating 200 jobs and taking care of people, and having affordable food, and at the same time, telling, giving a kid a job, that's where it starts, that's how you fight crime. We clearly, clearly have to have some sensible development, but parking and affordable housing and commercial space and creating jobs would be in my vision going forward with Hoboken. You've got enough apartments.
Next, Jim Doyle.
I think, I've been, this is probably my biggest hobby horse in the last 20 years of following politics in town, and so I certainly can't run from the fact that I have been urging and cajoling for reasonable-scale development for as long as I've been active in town. I've been, I'm running, that we conduct what's called a build-out analysis, which is a planning tool, which has not been performed yet in town, and it is a look into the future to determine what the city will look like if we build it out as is allowed under our zoning codes. We've gone from 30,000 to 50,000 people from 1990 to 2010 under the census, and we've gone from 17,000 units to 30,000 units of housing. Now, during that 20-year period, there was an awful lot of residential development, and I'm urging with the build-out analysis that we can, it would be, we can make informed decisions down the road, once we perform this, to know whether our infrastructure can handle another X thousand people in population, whether, how many more units will or will not come in. And, but I am definitely concerned about New Jersey Transit development in the south, and the potential for the development in the north of the city, however that will turn out to be. Thank you.
Joe Minday.
Thank you, Bob. I think we need sensible development in town. Places like the W, I'm not a fan of. It's, I don't think it fits with the town, I think it's too big, and it's a eyesore in town. It does bring jobs to town and rateables and taxes, but I think we need to definitely keep developing town, but doing it in a sensible way. The New Jersey Transit, we should be looking at that and talking to developers, saying, "Look, here's what we need for town, but we need givebacks. We need a new high school. We need, you know, a swimming facility in town. Maybe a new police station. We could take the police station that we have now and sell that land and use that land for something else." But we need to talk to these developers and not build big skyscrapers, but build reasonable housing and reasonable commercial space that will bring jobs, will bring retail to town, and also get givebacks for that, and we could, you know, help grow the town that way. Thank you.
Laura Miani.
Yes, hi. Thank you. Yes, in terms of development, I do think that we need to be, as councilpeople stewards of the city, in the sense that we do need to plan for the population growth that we may have. We may have 70,000 people in ten years. So we need to plan, not only if we have a development, such as a project, we need to look at, how's that going to affect the sewage, how's it going to affect the power grid, how's it going to affect commuters? Do we have the correct bus lines going? They haven't been updated in 20 years. So, yes, it is true. And also, just speaking with New Jersey Transit, we do need to have a dialogue, we need to ensure that we have givebacks, so that we can have a school, or we can have a pool, or a community center that's been on the spur a long time. So that's what we do need to do, is look and talk to these developers to make sure that it is sensible, and that we are in control of what is going forward for the town. Thank you.
Robby Balla.
My view towards development is that I generally frown upon any further residential development. I think we're overpopulated. Any development in this town, in my mind, needs to be resident-driven, meaning putting the priorities of the community ahead of the priorities of the developers. So that is, should be the starting point of any development. What do we want as a community in our town? And that is what should drive policy from local elected officials. I also support generally mixed-use development, a mix of retail, commercial, and residential, if necessary for a plan. And lastly, I support family housing. We want people to stay in Hoboken. We need more three-bedroom units, more units that can accommodate growing families, so that people can come here as a young adult like I did, get married, have kids, and have their children have a life here in Hoboken, and have a housing stock that promotes family housing also is a priority in terms of development for me. Thank you.
Patricia Waiters.
Answer my rebuttals now, or just, I'm going to answer the question. I have two rebuttals too after this. With development, I'm sorry. With development, I'm totally against this. It's disheartening to ride down the second floor where I live and see the word luxury in front of every building that's being built. You can't even afford the application fee. And it's sad, because when you think about it, and I'm at every meeting sometimes at 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning, look who sits on the development board, look who sits on the zoning and the planning board, they're sitting up here tonight saying, "No development, affordable housing," and they is not for it. Everything's being built, it's residential, and it's not residential as businesses. And what a coincidence, it's people that's on the zoning board, planning board, and related to the council members. I've seen restaurants, nail salons, parlors, and it's the same people that's sitting up here saying, "No more development." What's going to happen is, we all going to sink into the ground. It's overcrowded here, we don't need no more development. Stop being greedy. Thank you.
Peter Biancomando.
I believe in sensible development. Development that would add charm to this city without destroying the character of this town. I'm proud to be running with Frank Rayer, who's been a doer in terms of building affordable housing. And I look forward to building more on the city council when Frank and I and our ticket get into office. Thank you.
Brittany Montgomery-Cook.
I also support development that balances the needs of the community, and ironclad agreements with developers to support their public givebacks. One of the things discussed, or not discussed, is the zoning board, and having a full cabinet of people on the zoning board to support the people that are trying to get their applications seen and heard. So I'd like to see that happen immediately, before things go forward.
Ed Warner Gonzalez.
Well, everyone in Hoboken always likes to compare themselves to, or we always like to compare Hoboken to New York City. And Manhattan itself is the most densely populated county in the country. But Manhattan is constantly revitalizing and reinvesting in the community. I think any conversation that we have with a developer, we need to realize that they will want to maximize their profits, but we, as the city and the city council, we need to maximize what we obtain for our residents. We need to understand the consequences, but we need to make sure that it has a positive impact for the Hoboken residents. Development is not necessarily bad, it could be used for good. If we make the right investments, have the right public-private partnerships, it can help us alleviate some of our flooding issues, it can help us improve our infrastructure, upgrade our facilities, such as schools, maybe a new police station, have new parks, but we just need to be innovative. Thank you.
So this is the rebuttal period. By the way, if I skip anyone, you guys let me know. I skipped David, all right, sorry. Go ahead. Number 10.
I'm glad I get to speak on this issue, because this is what really got me involved in public service in Hoboken in the first place. I was part of a group that was fighting a development project in the southwest of town, because we knew it was going to happen like every other development project, where large amounts of upzoning were going to happen, without the community givebacks, that we should be demanding, that your government officials need to be demanding. That's what we've been doing since I've been on the city council, and particularly since I've been a chair of the Community Development Committee. We have pushed developers to build those larger three-bedroom units at market rate that are there and are needed for these families of ours that have started to root in this community, but don't have a place to go, short of buying a $1.2 million brownstone. They've rooted themselves and are going to be forced to leave. We need to also use the redevelopment process to get the other things we need. We need to ensure that every student in this city has the desks and the classrooms they need, no matter how their parents have chosen to school them. We need to make sure that we have the open space that this community needs, and that as we add development, we don't actually increase our shortage of open space per capita. We need to do all these things. We've done this on the city council, I've done this as chair of the Community Development Committee, and now that our economy is improving and development pressures are starting to really wind up again, we need to make sure that we don't walk away from that strategy for the four years moving forward.
Okay, so that would be the rebuttal period. Patricia's already indicated, she's ready to. Go ahead.
This is a rebuttal, and you said, "Form and make decisions for development in a formal but sensible way." I don't think it's been nothing but sensible, and Mr. Balla and you also, Mr. Mello, I have a quick question. The building the Curling Club, is that market, and is it affordable? The Curling Club building that you live in?
Just finish your statement, and then they can respond if they want to.
Just a good question, a question that-
Patricia, Curling Club was built about 15 years ago.
Thank you. Thank you, but then you said sensible development, or you said-
Okay, we can do a Q&amp;A. You have your statement, and then if he wants it, you already gave it. And anyone else? Okay. Rebuttal from Mr. Doyle.
You know, the development question is like the park question. Who up here is going to say, "I don't want parks," or "I want overdevelopment?" But it strikes me that the northwest redevelopment zone, which, you know, Mr. Rayer was the designated contractor for, they're talking about givebacks to the community, and we got nothing back from that. And I don't blame you, Mr. Rayer, because frankly, the city didn't ask you to give anything back, and so why should you offer it up? But I think that, and then Councilman Ramos approved each one of those development zones which did not give back to the community for the decade. So I don't want to be negative, but I think there's talk and then there's action. Thank you.
Mr. Rayer.
I think he better get his facts straight. Number one, let's start off here. I divested everything I have in the northwest section to become your councilman. I had to do that before I'm sitting here. That's one. Two, givebacks, I gave the city this year alone, $4 million, and 16 different lots back as a giveback, because they took away my right not to build it, and let my partners build it when I had no rights, because I had to sell my rights to make it happen. When Ruben Ramos came in with Carrow Marsh, they went to de-designate me. My heart and soul would have been delivering the affordable housing units, all of them that I promised, the three parking garages that they took away and put buildings. So I don't know what he's talking about, but I can tell you right now, in City Hall and the bank account, they got $4 million of my money, plus they got 16 lots to build, that were parked, or it was supposed to be for a charter school and a parking garage, 325-car parking garage. They did, they scrapped that too. Thanks.
Anyone else? All right. Saying I'm moving on, this question, we have a couple versions of. "What would you do to prevent vote-buying through mail-in ballots that decide elections and destroy the will of the electorate, the people?" Another card. Do you think we have a problem with the vote-buy-mail process and vote-buying allegations? And there's some more good government kind of questions in this regard, so you can expand on that more generally if anyone likes. Peter Biancomando.
Thank you for that question, Mr. Doyle. The way I look at vote-buy-mail is I look at my 80-year-old-
(laughter)
Mr. Bowden, Mr. Bowden, my apologies. Thank you for the microphone, Mr. Doyle. The way I look at vote-buy-mails is, I look at my grandmother, who just turned 80 years old on Saturday, who could barely walk. Who are we to suppress her vote at the polls? I think that people using voter suppression tactics in terms of vote-buy-mails are just wrong. Most of the country are voting by mail, and I believe the state of Oregon only votes by mail. So, and again, if there are irregularities, it needs to be reported, and I will not stand for that. So again, we cannot suppress voters, and vote-buy-mail is just another way for a person to exercise their free will. Thank you so much.
Brittany Montgomery-Cook.
Vote-buy-mail is something that helps both young and old Hoboken. There's professionals that are working late in New York City that can't get home in time or wake up early enough to vote, and there's seniors that can't get out of their buildings. This is their legal right, and I believe there's no reason why they shouldn't have this opportunity.
Patricia Waiters.
Vote-buy-mail has been abused in Hoboken, because they went into, and this is for every candidate, and the mayor, the city mayor now, they took advantage of such large ward, like the fourth ward, to manipulate uneducated people about vote-buy-mail. I went yesterday to the county's, they had a class, and I learned a lot about vote-buy-mail. It was designed for disabled people, people that couldn't get to the poll, college kids, that's the way. But they have abused this system in past practice for so long, and they use it as an excuse of somebody exercising their right. Do not sell your vote, it's like selling your soul. People fought hard for us, it's about dignity, and when you do this, it places an impact on innocent candidates and make us lose the election. So it's really bad, if you're able to get up in the morning and walk to go buy a $50 absentee, walk to the machine and vote on the machine, please, please, it takes two seconds of your time, it's about dignity and respect. I'm totally against the voters by mail. I mean, I'm going to educate the people myself, but it's constant abuse, we have years and years of abuse and neglect, doing this to innocent, vulnerable people. I'm totally against the vote by mail. Nothing against the senior citizens.
Sorry, Robby Balla.
Thank you. Conceptually, I'm not against vote-buy-mail, and actually, for some of the same reasons that other people have said I support vote-buy-mail. If you're traveling or you can't get some polls, it's a perfectly legitimate means to actually cast your ballot and make your opinion heard. What I am against is the abuse of the vote-buy-mail system. And the problem in Hoboken is that right now, in the past, the vote-buy-mail system has been, in my opinion, abused in a way that may be fraudulent in nature. I had the opportunity to closely examine the 2010, I believe, special election for the fourth ward- the Fourth Ward council seat that was vacated when Mayor Zimmerman became the mayor of Hoboken. And with, at that time, candidate Aunt Capinti, with his campaign, what you saw was a very close pattern when you looked at the elect reports of volunteers-